Halliburton is located on Treaty twenty. Mishisagi Territory. And in the traditional territory of the Mishisagi and nations collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. Which are Curve Lake, Rama, Ayawatha, Alderville, Skugog Island, Bosale and Georgian Island First Nations. We acknowledge its shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area. And recognize its original indigenous inhabitants as the stewards of its lands waters. Since time immemorial. Um, thank you. Item three is the presentation of the agenda. Is there anything on the agenda that we have to change or add to? Chris, any last minute stuff you want to add in?
Yeah, actually, we're able to do that between Friday when we pre-published and the publishing of the public. So that is reflected in the agenda. And presumably you're looking at the most recent one that came out on Friday or Monday.
I'm not sure I am, but let's just assume I am. Okay.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to accept the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, you have the motion there, I think, if you wouldn't mind reading it.
Okay, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the. Uh, sorry, that's the consent agenda. For the past agenda.
I don't think, do we have one for the approving the agenda itself? Or do we, or do we not do that?
Um, so this is where uh. I'm not an expert, I'll.
No, so it's okay. It's okay. Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't. Let's assume you don't. We'll move on to item four, the Declaration of pecuniary interests. Anybody have an pecuniary interest that they want to declare? Either now or when we get to the item on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to item four or five, sorry, which is the consent agenda, which consists of the draft minutes of the last meeting on um. January eleventh, I think it was. The county librarians report. And the circulation statistics, Hi Ceece. Hi Jennifer, sorry. Um, any questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Chris, would you remove the, read the motion, please?
Okay. Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the consent agenda for February eighth, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting as presented.
May I have a motion to approve, please? Seconded by.
Tim.
Please, thank you very much. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Move on to the financial reports. Um, the actual financial report for uh. For January twenty twenty-three. Chris, do you want to take us through that? Any issues?
Actual report?
Yeah.
Um.
Financial report.
The financial report, uh, I would like to say is not a familiar, uh, a familiar format to usual and uh. Finance and it's because the reports uh are unable to be um. Uh, run while we're in, well, the budget hadn't been approved yet. So for January, there's no figures in the same way that uh we normally get them through the Questic and financial software. But we did want to give you the um snapshot of spending, so that's what the uh. Short table is um included in the, in the package.
That's, that's the first table in the package?
Yeah, so.
Okay, great.
If um, if there are any questions about that, I apologize. It's not what you were expecting probably. Um, but now that um, you know, we've come from the budget uh talks, I think it's going to start to uh. Well, I, I know for a fact it'll be uh the same as per usual.
Good, okay. I figured there was something like that in there. Okay, um, any questions on that then? Okay, seeing none.
I just make a comment?
We have to move those, I assume. No, yes, Chris, go ahead.
Uh, you'll note that there's a section for contribution from others. And it's a sixteen hundred dollars. Uh. We did receive the fifteen hundred dollars from the Rotary Club of Halliburton towards um Canopy Streaming Service. It, uh, the check was sent right before Christmas and we were hoping it would be included in twenty twenty-three. But it's fine. It arrived uh just after and was processed as part of two. Twenty twenty-three.
Good. That's an extra revenue we didn't expect. Uh, I assume, I've seen there's a, Chris, given this, given the format of the statements, do you have a motion to approve them?
Uh, well, we, we do uh need a motion for the financial uh report.
I think you have one there. There we go, okay.
I don't. Okay.
Okay, read it out, please.
It resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the financial report for February eight, two thousand twenty-three, right, uh, sorry. I'm merging two uh documents together.
Should be January twenty twenty.
Be it resolved that the Halliburton County Library Board accepts the financial report for January twenty twenty-three. As presented.
May I have a mover, please? Lisa, thank you. Seconder, please.
Adele.
Adele, thank you, Adele. Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll go on to library policies. Anything in there, Chris?
Yes, so at this um.
There's the. Yeah, go ahead.
At this meeting, we, we need to select the, the policy committee.
Yes.
So um, as per last time, um. Uh, well, I'll tell you firstly, the committee is generally composed of three members, the, the Chair of the Library Board, the Vice Chair and one public member uh to be chosen by the, the board. So uh, I thought we could follow the same rules last time where uh we'll, we'll see if anyone uh will nominate um. Potential policy wonk who might like to join us and then um we can uh vote accordingly. If there are more than one uh person's nominated, we can um. Do a short impromptu uh. Presentation about why they would be a good committee member and make our choice from there.
Okay, so Lisa and I are on it uh automatically, I assume. So um, who would, who would like to nominate a public member? Adele, Jennifer? Who, who else is, or um Paul or Tim? Anybody want to nominate one of those people?
Are any of them interested? Maybe we should ask that and then one of us could nominate.
That's a good question. I was just gonna do that. Would any, okay, Adele just put her hand up. Okay. Adele's.
A question. Are there any other committees that? Have tasks or committees? Some committees I should say. Yeah, I'm just gonna turn this off. Uh, the question was, um, are there any other committees? Uh, that we, we get up and running uh in, within the board, library board? The short answer is, uh, yes, there is also an advocacy and fundraising committee. Uh, through COVID, it, it was dormant, more or less. Um, we do defer our um. Advocacy and fundraising to the friends of the library generally, uh, just because it's so active and supportive. Um, but you know, it's nice for the board to have some say in the direction about where we uh, you know, could pursue uh fundraising activities as a group or, you know, uh. Identifying local possibilities. And then oftentimes, library boards will have a sort of an expert in fundraising um that can, you know, help us. So it's really up to the pleasure of the board, what, whether you'd like to revive uh that uh committee. Um. Today, we're prepared to select for the policy committee, but we can certainly discuss the others.
I think maybe we should do just the policy committee today, Chris, and then we'll come back to that other one at the, at the next meeting, if that's okay? And you could perhaps send out a a little briefing note about the role of the, of that particular committee, and then we'll have something to look at before we do it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, I had, I know you have a motion to appoint Adele to the um committee. I think you have one because I saw it and what you sent to me.
So we do, and I just wanted to confirm that you would be interested in joining us. Sure. All right, a- as it turns out, uh. We, we, it looks like we have a policy committee and I can read the uh motion.
Thank you.
Uh, be it resolved that Adele Espina be appointed as the public member to the policy committee.
Any uh, could I have a mover, please? Um, Jennifer moves and, and she seconds. Anybody opposed? I don't think so. Adele, you're not opposed to your motion, are you? Motion's carried, motion's carried. Thank you very much, Adele, for helping out. Now, some business arising from the minutes. We're going to go back and have a chat about our famous van. Chris, it's all yours.
Sure thing. Um, so I just wanted to um respond to a member that proposed uh that are swiftly um written motion from last time be updated with the line uh that the purchase price of the new vehicle before taxes be fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars. Uh, it makes sense that we would include the cost of the um vehicles so that we can look back and, you know, later on and uh have that documented. So apologies, I, I, we were kind of creating that motion on the fly, as you may recall last time.
Yeah.
And now we've kind of fine tuned it. So can I read that motion?
Yes, did anybody have any questions on this? Well, read the motion first and then we'll take questions on it. How about that?
Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives for information motion L O six twenty twenty-three regard regarding the transfer of funds for the purchase of a new library vehicle. And that the purchase price of the new vehicle before taxes be fifty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay, I've got Jennifer first. And then Tim.
Um, question about procurement. Whose procurement rules do we follow for these big purchases? It, does the board have its own? Is it the counties? Um, where do I go to, to look for those?
Excellent question. So in this case, we follow the procurement uh of the county. We enjoy the um purchasing power that the county uh uh affords us mainly because it's going technically in their name. Uh, through that, we get a discount on the taxes through the funding that comes back um to us. We also get a uh, a, a much more favorable insurance policy. We uh also, um, like, all of this will be worked out in an MOU between myself and uh Andrea Robinson, the Director of Corporate Finance. Um, but al- al- also, uh, once the, the oil changes or whatever, uh, sort of free services are offered after the purchase. Um, my understanding is that we could also have the vehicle serviced and the winter tires put on by the uh roads department at the Inglesby Yard. So um, the only, to, to just go back up to the beginning of your question, there was no procurement officer uh that she had just started, I believe, uh, when we were initially talking about the purchase. So in this case, Andrea Robinson uh jumped in as our um procurement officer to help us with this purchase and also went to sign on behalf of the library board. When there was no actual library board uh in existence between the last one and the, and yourselves.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's great. Very helpful.
Thanks, Jennifer. Any other questions? If not, Chris, I, um, oh, sorry, Tim, I forgot you had your hand up. Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, no problem. I hate being tedious. I have a little experience in this.
Yes.
How cast in stone is the fifty-eight thousand price? Can we lock in at that or?
Yeah, so also a great question. Uh, for those that may not have heard, uh, how locked in or in stone is the, the price as listed? The reason that we're listing it in the um, in the motion is because it is a fixed price now. Um, when, until we put the deposit down, it did change. At the first of every month, they reevaluate the manufacturer's suggested retail price. And uh, it was, it was going up and it actually came down slightly right before we made our purchase. Um, but uh, it, not until you um pay uh the deposit and sign, do, do you um get that? So that's the price and then there are taxes, as I understand it, um, uh, are in the neighborhood of, I think Adele.
It's under two percent.
It's just under two percent that will end up uh paying for this big ticket item um due to the rebates that are given back to municipalities. So.
Perfect. That was, that was, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, yeah. So the taxes, I think, uh, it's like, I think, the last I recall was one point seven seven nine or something. Um, and it, it amounts to less than two thousand dollars in our case.
Okay, that's great. The, the, my last, my other question was, when do we expect to receive the vehicle?
Yeah, sure. Uh, uh, I was just thinking about this in the budget uh presentation at Council Chambers. Um. I, I'm not sure if it's the optimism of the salesman, but he did indicate that he thought summer was a possibility for us. And the reason is because this vehicle is not as um sophisticated under the hood, uh, under the dash as some uh vehicles are. It doesn't have the same number of chips. Um, and so it's a very, I mean, it's a plain Jane cargo van. It's.
I saw one sitting on a lot, you were. This week.
Yes, yeah, they're, they're definitely around.
Exactly from the outside, I didn't look inside what we were. Would be after, but anyway, I was curious about that myself when the delivery.
Yeah, fingers crossed for, for uh some, summer, yeah. Uh, but unlike the roads department, for example, who have been waiting uh sometimes eighteen months or more for vehicles, uh, this time. This vehicle is being made, I think, in Mississippi or Alabama and not Turkey or Mexico. So we'll get it presumably much faster.
Great, excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions on the motion?
One more quick question.
One more question here.
What will be for an engine?
Um, the engine is uh, the question was about an engine. It's an all-wheel drive vehicle with um three point six liter engine and it's a twelve, uh, ten-speed um transmission.
So it's E six.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
It'll work for here for what we do.
So the main important uh feature was the all-wheel drive and the backup camera.
And I will move your motion.
So motion's moved by Tim. Thank you. Seconded by Lisa. Any other questions? Anybody opposed? Thank you. Motion is carried. Now, new uh, new business, Chris. Um, couple of items in there. I'll let you go through them in one at a time. Oh, do you need a? Okay. Need a little time to catch up?
Yeah, I do. I just need to see the agenda again.
Yeah. I have my computer and iPad going, so I have the zoom on one and the agenda on the other, so I can zip through it pretty quickly.
No problem. So um, I just wanted to uh. Bring up a conversation. Uh, something happened last week whereby the finance department um sent out a, to all staff in the county, uh, an updated uh mileage uh and expense claim form. Uh, this is a standard form that we use to uh capture the kilometers that are driven between our branches and the, and the way in which we compensate staff for using their own vehicles. Um, for those of you that were on the board last year, you'll recall, we had a conversation when uh the rate was decided to go um up to the Canada revenue rate for twenty twenty-two, which at the time was sixty-one cents. Um, through a simple mistake, which uh I believe is only because we share policies with the county in some instances, and we have our own policies uh for the library, which are separate in other instances. Um, finance didn't realize that we don't uh follow them uh just routinely on it, on an increase such as a Canada revenue recommendation towards automobile uh compensation rates. So it really does need to uh generate um conversation and uh a, a motion that I need to provide finance with before we would uh increase from sixty-one cents to the new proposed twenty twenty-three rate of sixty-eight cents. The only thing I would like to add uh to start the conversation is that um. This uh choice does impact library staff um. As it would uh say, maybe the IT department, uh, because we're uh implementing um staff uh travel throughout the county, uh, which is a large ge- geography, as you know, and um it, it is required that they use their own vehicles. So with the cost of gas going up and other costs, um. It, it would uh, it would certainly be appreciated. Um. But so we do need to discuss and, and uh make a decision.
Um, just a quick question, Chris. Do you have money in the budget for this additional rate?
So as it turns out, we didn't know when we were getting the van. I assume that it could take up to a year or more. So I did build in extra for um for uh staff mileage this year and we are covered uh for this increase, yes. That's one, that makes it easier. Um, if I had not uh done so, my proposal would have been to phase in and increase over a period of time. Um, but as any, anyone who drives a vehicle in Halliburton County knows, um, it's, it's not. It's, it's, it's costs more to do so. And we do level uh hundreds of kilometers per week to get our staff uh to and from uh the branches.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, um, Ceece has his hand up. Go ahead, Ceece.
Uh, I would assume, though, that we are, we are certainly locked in uh to the sixty-one that we had passed in the previous year. So we're just looking at moving it from sixty-one to sixty-eight. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, that's correct.
If I could just.
So hey, wait, Chris. Yeah, go ahead.
So um, uh, as I understood it, the county's policy is that when there's a change with the Canadian Revenue Agency, uh, they automatically follow it and they don't discuss it in the way that we are. But because uh the library board has governance and responsibility around finance, um, that's why there's one extra step for discussion and approval.
Yeah. So, so we need to uh actually pass a motion to do this and then we get into sync with the county on this. Is that correct? I think so, yeah. Chris, I can't seem to hear you all of a sudden.
Yes, that, that's correct, David.
Okay, great. So um. Are there any other questions on this? It seems pretty administrative to me. Um, Chris, do you have a motion that we can deal with, please?
I do have one. I, I would like to just add the, the rate, so it's also recorded. Okay. Uh, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives for information, the verbal update to the library's mile, mileage rate. And that the Halliburton County Public Library Board recommends that the new automobile, automobile allowance rate of sixty-eight cents per kilometer for the year twenty twenty-three be consistent with those outlined on the Canada Revenue site.
Thank you very much. Um, may I have a mover for the motion, please? Moved by, who's? Adele's, thank you very much. Seconded by Paul. Did you put your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, it can come after. Yeah, sure, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions on this motion? Paul, Paul, please go ahead.
Yeah, the question of is, does this mean then that every year it has to be revisited so that it can be raised if the CRA says uh the rate's increased? Is that you want to reserve that uh option?
That, that's been the past practice. The, did everyone hear the question?
Yep, yes.
Um, so uh, the past practice has been that every time an, an adjustment happens, um. Then, then we decide and we send this motion that we've just created to the finance department uh so that we follow along. I mean, if we chose to, to change it to follow the county's policy, that would be another um motion, but uh.
I just wonder if, if that's something that would make sense to do and then it's done, then, then there's this doesn't have to be repeated annually. Or is there a reason to not do it?
I mean, it doesn't go up every year, um, but it's certainly due to the fact of inflation this time around, um, you know, that's a, it's a significant jump.
It's essentially up to revenue cannon.
In that case, I mean, it is a guideline, right? It's uh not adopted by every company.
I got you, Ceece.
Yeah, I thought it was a policy. Okay.
Okay, Ceece, Ceece has a question before we uh go any further. Go ahead, Ceece.
Yeah, just to, just to note, uh, it was frozen at forty-five cents for many years. And I think it was last year when, when we came to the conclusion that when you're paying uh almost two dollars a liter, which was at that time, that it would float to the CRA the number. So it's, hasn't been in force for that long. At least you, sounds about a year, wasn't it, that we've been doing it? Prior to that, it was forty-five cents and it'd been like that for, for many, many years, but the policy now is to fluctuate.
Last year was the first time we changed it since I've been on the board, so that's a good point, Ceece. Thank you. So we have a motion on the table to do, to increase the rate. Um. I, I'm gonna deal with this motion first, okay, because we have to do it. Um, is, can I have a mover, please?
We, we just did that with Adele and Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did already. I'm sorry, apologies. Um, any questions, more questions? Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carried. Now, should we entertain a motion that links us directly to the county with respect to this and, as Paul said, and get it done once and for all? Or do you want to do a little more work on that, Chris?
It's really uh up for discussion, I think. Uh, I just need some guidance on what the general feeling is. I mean, it's not always um perhaps possible if, if we have increases in many other areas.
Yeah.
But I mean, it is due to our unique geography. It is a factor that impacts the morale of staff, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I think from an administrative point, it would make it easier. Um, and we can then, uh, when we're doing our budget, try and make sure we anticipate that and, and get it built into the budget. Does anybody want to move a motion like that to get us synced up with the county right away and we'll just add that to our agenda? Or do you want to have a little more discussion with it at, at the next meeting? Lisa, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you could actually amend that and um that. Amen, and then that resolution is what I'm trying to say, just to say, and for, and that.
Yes.
The wording that we would, that the, the library mileage would be in line with whatever the county rate is.
Good point, Lisa. Good point. So why don't we entertain that as a motion? I think Chris is writing it out right now. We'll wait till he's done and then you can read it, Chris. Just the, just the last part that you're sketching out now. Thank you, Lisa. That's a good point.
Okay, um, so. And that in future years, the Halliburton County Public Library Board will fall into alignment with the county's uh adoption of any CRA increases.
Okay, thank you. Do I have the permission of the mover and seconder to add that to the motion?
Yes.
Adele and Paul, okay, both agree, so we'll consider that motion carried. Is that fair?
That's great.
As, as amended? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um, Chris, moving on to nine point two, which is a proposed amendments to the two-two twenty twenty-three budget. Anything you want to add? Tell us about that.
Sure. So I was just in the ca- county chambers presenting uh the library budget. Uh, it went very well. The binder was printed, um, I think just after Christmas originally, uh, with all of the departments for the county, including the libraries on, starting on page ninety-seven. And the number that was listed at that time was much uh slightly higher than wh- where we fell uh after um January ended. And uh, there's two reasons for that. One is that we learned that uh the insurance policies that had been projected to be fifteen percent uh increase this year were less. So it's actually about fifteen hundred and fifty dollars uh less than expected for the year, which is a great thing for our revenue. And then additionally, uh, library administration um staff applied this for the, the Young Canada Works uh grants for two summer students to join us this year. We have uh every confidence that we uh are eligible. We were told by the uh organization um that organizes the grants, that they were really looking for uh active participants. So um with, they made changes to the grant and the revenue would increase to forty-three hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the two uh students should we get them. So we're planning for a total reduction in the original ask of five thousand nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Um, which brought us down uh uh to ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars um uh this, this year as an ask.
Okay, great. And has that been approved?
So uh, Lisa, maybe, and Lisa, Ceece and Jennifer, could you just clarify? Because I, I wasn't sure, like, it seems like there's one more formality ahead, but the generally the bu- budget was passed today, as I understood.
Yeah, I, I feel, if, if I may, I feel like there was a consensus on, um, we only kind of wrestled at the very end with one item regarding um housing money and whether we put it in and how much, but I believe the rest of it, as presented, was pretty much accepted. So you know, it could be, instead of being like three point oh one percent, it might be three point two, but but nothing to do with, the library was basically left, left alone.
Okay, well, thank you very much uh for your help. Um, the three of you, we appreciate it. And others on the council that aren't here, obviously. Okay, Chris, thank you very much. Um, we don't need any motion on that, do we?
So ti- typically, the library board needs to approve the budget and because the budget, the ask that we're making has changed, my understanding should probably just put it down into writing, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
So um, be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives for information, the verbal update from the CEO regarding proposed amendments to the twenty twenty-three budget. And then I thought we could uh add the details.
Sure, yeah.
That due to increased revenue from Young Canada Works of four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And a decrease in the expected insurance costs of fifteen hundred fifty dollars. I think that's it.
And the new budget is?
Uh, ninety-three thousand. About ninety-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh a mover, please? Moved by. Lisa, seconded by. Tim, Tim, thank you. Any further questions on that? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Chris, the nine point three on the policy, we've done that, right?
Um yeah, I I just wanted to bring up uh some a broad overview, if I could.
Yeah, sure, go ahead. We've got some time.
Okay, so I mean, the the first policy that I'll be bringing to the committee will be just sort of a. A recommended change from um HR around some wording to clarify something between part-time staff. I'll get into the details with the committee. Uh what happens ultimately is the committee uh evaluates uh recommended changes that. Staff and management makes at the library level, um sort of brings up any concerns or uh. Different perspectives, and then we um formalize the wording so that what we present to the library board is sort of a finished draft. Uh to be approved. So uh we'll start everyone off a little bit slow. In that there's just some minor changes that we've been tracking that need to be made since um the last board uh dissolved. Um but in a in a bigger project uh scheme, we do. We do want to create for the first time at H C P L a meeting room policy and a volunteer policy. These are two items that um not only are they coming up frequently, but we're starting to get some um. Sort of uh flags from other libraries in Ontario and elsewhere that due to intellectual policy or intellectual freedom. Issues such as, you know, say, Dragon Queen Storytime. Um it's always good to have some clarity and writing about um how the library. Makes its choices and 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 uh offers its space. So those are two items, um. And then uh perhaps if uh guidelines could be developed around uh who can, you know, come and deliver in branch storytimes. Because as I said during the um council meeting today, uh we are really uh quite um. Blessed and grateful for all of the uh independent people, the groups and partnerships that people propose to us. Uh we're all almost uh over inundated sometimes with the offers, uh and we we really don't have um. Uh like a formal process, so the policy committee could really help in this area.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to bring that forward to the committee in due course, those things? You do a little work on them and then bring them forward to us?
Exactly. So right now, we're at the research and development stage whereby we reach out to other libraries. We try to like beg, borrow, and steal and not recreate the wheel.
Great idea.
Some great policies written by, in some cases, uh you know, professional entities that support libraries and bigger centers, so. That's starting to trickle in right now, and we'll set a date for the next uh policy committee meeting and get started.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um. Do we need some work to be done on the uh twenty-three work plan, or is that just for information?
Question.
Oh, sorry, Tim, I did I didn't see Tim's hand up. Sorry, I'm trying to look at two things.
I may not be popular, but one of the new, I think. Oh, living in Halliburton. Always getting worse and worse every year is the minimum red tape. Seems to me that we're creating a big pile by having these policies. Storyteller, I think it's good. Do the storytellers do a criminal background check?
Yeah, so the great question. So the the idea of the policy is it formalizes a process where when someone comes and. Asks us, we we don't just do it with a handshake, and it's all great, because if something does go awry, like um a challenge. Or some news article or a Facebook post uh that takes on a life of its own. It it's good to re- resort to the policy and say, oh, actually, we require a vulnerable vulnerable sector check. It's free to the person um who applies, uh should they get a a letter from the CEO. So that's an example of something that we've been doing already, but it's there's it's not really written down anywhere. And a lot of what I've come and Andrea and I have come to do is sort of modernize and update uh past practices. Just so that they're they're sort of more entrenched in a in a formal process, if that helps.
Great.
But then I'm glad to hear that.
Thanks.
Greet you much more.
Yeah. The idea is, if I could just follow up, is that uh it reduces liability and the chance for um. You know, uh explosive news stories that sometimes you happen uh in public libraries currently, uh not just in the in the U S. But also now in Canada, and um there are some uh drama, there's some drama that has happened in larger libraries. And smaller ones around the use of meeting room space, and if we have nothing to point to, um there there are some some challenges.
Well, well, one problem I see in that regard here, you can see it in uh in larger urban areas. Although that's changing quite a bit as time goes on, is in the community side. Pretty nearly everybody knowing everybody. Not not even passing storm, but I mean uh. That may be a reason to. Hold on, right?
Yeah, we certainly have people coming from all over. Uh we've noticed the last couple of years, but um. Uh I mean, the the idea with the policy committee is that we can talk out these issues, and if if it doesn't sit well with uh the board, then we can discuss it again. Uh yeah, oh, so there's lots of um checks and balances and opportunities, yeah.
Yeah, these are these are the kind of specifically that the uh committees work out before it comes to the board, so we'll we'll deal with this. And we'll bring to the board the uh the recommendations from the committee, if that's okay. Thanks, Tim.
Hey, I'm done.
Okay. Is there anything else, Chris?
Uh not on that topic.
Okay. Can we go now to the municipal roundtable, or I am I missing something? I mean, the the work plan is here for information, I assume, right?
Yeah, so I just um if I could, I just wanted to let everyone know that. If I said didn't say it before I meant to, this is an evolving document. It's it's always changing. Um. For example, uh even today, I I realize that um in the twenty twenty-three goals, uh I intended to include. Um to draft an emergency preparedness plan for the line, which is pretty common amongst the departments in the county. And um uh the warden, uh Liz Danielson, did recommend that this be a topic, uh at least maybe start uh this year. We've got lots on our plate for sure, but it is a big project, and we want to get started. Health and safety is is an issue.
Yeah, good point.
I'll add that. Um uh as far as I know, uh we should be okay to resume library board meetings. Moving forward at the three P M time period, which is normally when we would uh do that. Because the future meeting shouldn't go as long. I don't know if that's safe to say. Do Jennifer, Lisa, or Cease have any thoughts about that?
I I I think we originally did the four o'clock to accommodate the budget discussions, and then we, now that they're. Let's assume over, we can probably slip back to our three o'clock times time slot. But again, again, for the members of council that are on the board, that if if there is an issue where the time time's gonna drag on a bit. We can always move our meeting a little bit to accommodate you. That's never been an issue. Jennifer, please.
Um I hate to be the disruptive sort. I think I probably have the longest, the furthest to travel. But between um Halliburton County Council whole meeting and home, it's about it's about an hour. But I do have provision that if uh if counts, if county council does not end by three. Well, or by two, or whatever it might be, I'll just come over to to dieart and meet in person with the group, so um. Yeah, it my preference would be to be able to get home, so there's someone here for childcare, but um if not, I can I can certainly make those arrangements.
Okay, thank you. Lisa?
Uh just just so you know, too, Jennifer, like, we're usually not leaving committee of the whole this late in the day. This is this is just budget season, so I think you'll find that, you know, we're us- we don't usually have lunch, let's put it that way. Okay, that's helpful. I didn't I didn't know that.
Yeah, we knew we knew that this was gonna be an an exception to the rules, so Jennifer, I think you'll be okay. Matter of fact, last year, we didn't have too many problems at all, quite frankly, if I can remember, so we're okay. Okay, um Chris, are you good with all of all of that before we go to the municipal roundtable, or do you have another item you want to throw in the pot?
Uh just two two points to fa- finish this last one. Uh all of the changes each time that they uh happen. I put in red, and then they revert back to black for time, and then um there is a a resolution uh. Prepared, if you if you'd like, I think it would normally we just uh propose a resolution because it just. Uh basically, it's a statement that says everyone's accepted and and presumably read the work plan for the year.
Okay, read read out the resolution, please.
Okay, uh be it resolved that the Halliburton County Public Library Board receives for information. The twenty twenty-three revised board work plan and further that the board work plan be hereby approved.
Perfect, thank you. Could I have a mover, please? Moved by Jennifer, seconded by. Cease, thank you very much. Any more questions? Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Now municipal roundtable. Lisa, Jennifer, Cease, you got anything you want to tell us about what's going on in that wonderful world of municipalities? Cease, go ahead.
It's not a it's not a it's not what uh is going on. It's a conversation that I kind of had with Chris earlier today and once before. And that's in with regards to general maintenance of the facilities that are being used as libraries. Um it it would be nice. I I don't know if we have a policy. Or whether it's left up to each individual municipality, or if there is a common form that's being used. But it would be a whole lot better if we could have some way of of putting something together that would say, okay, fine, and. In this particular facility, because obviously we have more than one facility, these are the issues that we we have come to the table. An example of something that would be important to know, but not something to get excited over, is that we have a light that's been burnt out. Okay, well, it should be replaced, and there's no problem with that. But in our department, in our municipality, Jim goes around periodically and changes all the light bulbs. So consequently, what he could do is he could, oh, there's one in the library, he's already doing the building department, so he'll go in and change that one. Uh that way, what we can do is we can come up and 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 establish what's being done. What Jim likes to be able to do, and he does that with the rest of us, is that when he gets a request for maintenance, or whatever it is that we want to call it. He's he he jots down the tentative date that he believes he's going to be able to deal with it. And then he sends it back to the person and says, okay, are you can you live with this? And and in that way, what it basically does is what's everybody on the same page, so there's no um. Ant- anticipation of something that's that that can be put out. Um having to be done immediately, and then those things that are in fact important and urgent, they're they're getting dealt with right away. But a lot of times, when they came to to our municipality, they came as health and safety issues. And and not everything is a health and safety issue. Some of it could be a leaky tap, that which which needs to be fixed or or something like that. So I'm wondering, is that something that we would like to develop a policy on if we do not have one? And if we were gonna do that, we probably want to talk to the to to the property managers at the four different municipalities to come up with something that would work. And really, all it is is a communication tool, no no more and no less. So that at the end of the day, if if you've got somebody that's concerned about a uh a challenge at one of the one of the libraries. It's it hasn't been forgotten, it can be dealt with, and that our property manager can actually fit it into his regular maintenance schedule. That's all. It's it's nothing, it's just an observation. Uh the the world is not going to come to an end if we don't deal with it, but it would make things a little simpler.
Thank you, Cease. Chris, you have any comment on that?
Sure, uh thank you, Cease. Uh behind the scenes, actually, uh each month, we have the workplace inspection form that comes in from all the branches. They're trickling in right now. They're generally done by the fifteenth of the month, so we receive uh. Uh identified items from a a trained uh person. Of course, it's health and safety training, but they're looking out for all kinds of deficiencies. In the facility, so for example, uh um you know, lights, for example, are on that list. Um but then we also respond to emails that come in from general staff who may be working in that branch on a rotation basis. Uh. Example, uh one of our staff pointed out a carpet in Cardiff was uh extra slippery and not um um. Functioning the way it was supposed to, and uh so we actually reached out to Jim already uh beyond that form. Uh but that's the form captures those deficiencies. We track it with a date, like you just said, Cease. And then we're also able to uh respond, because we maintain great relationships, and actually, it it's part of Melanie's job description to uh follow up with each item. Uh and then we discuss it be- between her and myself. I jump in when we need to, uh if if it's someone like Jim or. Uh Tanya, for example, in Minden Hills, um. Each uh municipality has a different style of of working, and we're happy to uh adapt as necessary. For example, uh Minden Hills prefers us to file a a custodial work form. Um whereby it's dated and stamped, uh so that there's a a record of it reported, and then a record of it uh being done as well. That's in addition to the um the records that we 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 maintain with the workplace inspection form and follow-up report. And then at the uh annual uh um uh release to the board, uh we have the the facilities report that Andrea. Brown works on, and that's a sort of a summary of all of the tasks tasks that were done. Flags, uh larger projects like carpet or uh windows needing to be replaced. Um so those checks and balances aren't something that we pro- project to the um the public through these meetings. Only because it does usually mention uh the names of individual staff members and when we talk to them, and that was, we were told to sort of keep that behind the scenes. But the facilities report is more generalized in that sense.
Yeah, I I I remember us looking at those last year, yeah. Okay, thank you. Um anybody else want to add?
No, no, no problem. All all I wanted to do is to make sure at the end of the day that that the that the concerns get taken care of, obviously. If they're behind-the-scenes stuff that just gets done and everybody's good with it. Yeah, you're right. There's no need to make any big deal out of it. It's just I want to make sure at the end of the day that. That our facilities are 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 looking good and 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 they're safe, that's all. And when I was talking to Jim, that was one of his concerns, just to make sure that whatever we're doing is gonna make our 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 libraries look good. In the in in the respective of our employees and the public, and at the same time, they're safe, so. If that's already in place, then fine, I'll just talk to Jim and 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 get myself sorted out, because I was wrong.
And just to follow up, I I do look forward to meeting Jim in person. We've we've really just had a a phone uh relationship so far. Um and so I'll be get getting out there to meet him probably around the time the carpet arrives.
He's a he's a great guy, Chris. He's the busiest he's the busiest guy in Highlands East, I think.
See him zooming by.
Lisa, do you have anything, or Jennifer?
I can't think of anything, no.
Okay, great.
Something I don't.
All right, thank you very much. Uh any need for a closed session? I don't think so, Chris.
It's a placeholder, so no.
Yeah, yeah, I I thought so. Okay, our next meeting is March sixth at three o'clock. Not four o'clock. Or eighth, sorry. I I I don't I don't have the right glasses on. I've got my seeing glasses, not my reading glasses, so I see, okay. At March eighth at at three o'clock. Thank you, Chris, or Cease. So, okay, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Be it resolved that the February eighth, sorry.
Sorry, it's okay. Paul put his hand up. Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
I'm done. Okay, uh be it resolved that the February eighth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Halliburton County Library Board now adjourned. And the time. Forty-seven.
Eleven forty-seven, moved by Paul. We don't need a seconder, and we don't need to approve it, because it's a motion to adjourn, and we just need a mover. Thank you, everybody, very much.